Yeah, we are on the record.
Thank you. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Michael Caruso. I'm an administrative law judge with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. I will be presiding over today's public comment hearing to receive public input on the draft disadvantaged communities criteria. We have closed captioning available in several languages for anyone joining by the Internet today. There is a little slide on the screen with instruction on how to use it, and there is a small box marked with two Cs on the lower left side of the screen. If you click on that link, you'll access the closed captioning. On behalf of the DEC and NYSERDA, I'd like to thank you for joining us at this hearing and for participating in this important process. The DEC, in partnership with the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, is holding 11 public hearings across New York State to receive public input on the draft disadvantaged communities criteria and advance the finalization of the criteria to help guide the implementation of the state's Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. New York's Climate Justice Working Group, which consists of representatives from environmental justice groups from across the state and New York State agency representatives, voted in December to release the draft criteria for identifying disadvantaged communities for public review. The draft disadvantaged communities criteria public comment period commenced in March with a 120-day public comment period that ends on July 7, 2022. The draft disadvantaged communities criteria can be found at climate.ny.gov. The criteria are based on geographic, public health, environmental hazard, and socio-economic factors, and, once approved, will be used to help meet the directives of the Climate Act relating to reducing pollution and greenhouse gas emissions, as well as to inform regulatory impact statements and the state's clean energy and energy efficiency investments. Notice of this hearing was published in the Environmental Notice Bulletin on May 4, 2022. And assisting me today with the hearing are members of DEC Offices of Communications Services. We have Maria Ketchmar and Andrea Linton. And in a moment, I will introduce Dr. David Witt of DEC's Office of Environmental Justice, who will give a brief overview of the work to date in the draft criteria. The purpose of today's public comment hearing is to allow members of the public to comment on the draft disadvantaged communities criteria. This is not a question-and-answer session, and comments will be accepted at this hearing today and at one more virtual public comment hearing session. Written comments may be submitted until July 7, 2022, and comments submitted by email must be received by the department by 5:00 p.m. on July 7. And to be considered comments, and those submitted by mail, must be postmarked by July 7, 2022. Equal weight is given to written and oral comments. The last hearing, remaining hearing, is scheduled for tomorrow for Western New York, and it's via WebEx, and it's scheduled at 12:00 p.m. on Thursday, June 30, 2022. Details for how to attend tomorrow's hearing can be found at climate.ny.gov. And the email address for the submission of written comments is DACcomments@DEC.ny.gov. That's G-O-V. Let me repeat that. It's DACcomments@DEC.ny.gov. And if you're joined us by the Internet, the website is listed on the screen right now. And the mailing address is draftDACcommentsNYSDECattention, Office of Environmental Justice, 625 Broadway, 14th floor, Albany, New York, 12233. And that address is also available on the screen right now. So now I'd like to introduce Dr. David Witt from the DEC to give a brief presentation.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to make sure that you could hear me.
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
My name is David Witt, as the ALJ Caruso had mentioned, and I wanted to thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you. I am currently the Indian Nations Affairs Coordinator with the Department of Environmental Conservation, and I'm here on behalf of the Office of Environmental Justice. Thank you for joining us for this public hearing on the draft disadvantaged communities criteria. As you may be aware, the Climate Act is the nation's most ambitious climate change-related legislation. Its goal is to reduce New York State's greenhouse gas emissions from all human activities by 100% over 1990 levels by the year 2050, with an incremental target of at least a 40% reduction in greenhouse gases by the year 2030. At least 85% of the reductions by 2050 must come from preventing the release of greenhouse gases. By implementing the Climate Act, we will create opportunities to build a better future. To ensure that this work also advances climate justice, the Climate Act mandates that at least between 35% to 40% of the benefits of New York State spending on clean energy accrue in disadvantaged communities. State agencies are also required to prioritize greenhouse gas emissions and co-polluted reductions in disadvantaged communities, including DEC and drafting regulations to meet the greenhouse gas emission limits required by the Climate Act. Now, the identification and prioritization of disadvantaged communities and accounting for the benefits of cutting pollution and improving resilience is what makes our Climate Act a transformative law. To identify disadvantaged communities in New York, the Climate Justice Working Group was guided by the language of the Climate Act in identifying disproportionately burdened communities. They voted to include 45 indicators using data on environmental hazards, climate change risk, public health issues, geography, and socio-economic factors like race, income, education levels, unemployment rates, and housing conditions. Additionally, the draft disadvantaged community designations are reflective of the working group, their lived experiences, and the lived experiences of residents of these historically overburdened and underfunded communities. Each census tract's score is based on relative burden, risk, vulnerability, or sensitivity. Specifically, the percentile rates of the indicators for each census tract are combined to produce a value that measures a census tract's relative level of environmental burdens and climate change risk, as well as population characteristics and health vulnerabilities relative to other tracts. Tracts with higher scores relative to other tracts in the state or their regions, for example, in New York City or the rest of the state, were identified as DACS. The working group also voted to include low-level households with incomes of 60% of the state median income as disadvantaged for the purposes of benefits and investments. And based on these criteria, you will see that 54% of households in the Mid-Hudson region fall into the disadvantaged communities criteria, with 46% found of those households in geographic disadvantaged communities. Now, thank you.
Thank you. As indicated in the notice for today's hearing, we are going to limit each speaker to two minutes to make their comments. Please be respectful of that time limit. For those attending over the Internet, there will be a two-minute timer on the screen to help you keep track of your time. If you've not completed your remarks after two minutes, I will ask you to conclude your remarks. When you make your statement, please speak loudly, slowly, and clearly. All comments this evening are being recorded by a court stenographer. If we cannot hear you, there is a risk that your statement will not be recorded accurately. And I've asked the stenographer if he cannot hear you or you're speaking too quickly to interrupt and ask you to slow down or speak up. It's very important that we get everything everyone has to say on the record today. And I will call your name when it is your turn to speak. At that time, your line will be unmuted if you have attended over the Internet. If you have attended by phone when I call your name, I will ask you to press *3 to raise your hand so that we can unmute your line. Please do not press *3 until we have called your name. When you begin speaking, please state your name. And if you're speaking on behalf of someone or some group of people, identify who it is that you are representing. And let me apologize in advance if I mispronounce anybody's name. If I do mispronounce your name, please correct me. Please spell your last name for the court reporter and be sure to speak clearly so the court reporter is able to accurately transcribe your statement. So with that, our first speaker today is John Crowley. And I don't think I see John Crowley listed as logged in on the Internet. If John Crowley, if you've joined us by phone, if you will press *3 on your phone to raise your hand, we can then identify you and be able to unmute your line. I do not see any raised hands, so I am going to move on to the next registered speaker. It's Ann Finneran. And I don't believe I saw Ann logged in yet. If Ann Finneran, if you've called in, please press *3 on your phone to raise your hand. I do not see any raised hands. So I'll call the next speaker. And our next registered speaker is Megan Boone. And again, Megan Boone, if you've joined us by phone, please press *3 on your phone so we can identify you. All right. I do not see a raised hand, so our next registered speaker is Daniel Atona. And I don't see Daniel as being logged in online, but if you've joined us by telephone, please press *3 to raise your hand. All right. I do not see a raised hand, so our next registered speaker is Tamsin Hollow. And I don't see Tamsin logged in on the Internet. If you have called in, Tamsin Hollow, please press *3 on your phone. All right. Our next registered speaker then is Cal Truman, and I see Cal there. Please unmute Cal Truman's line. You're unmuted. Cal Truman, if you're speaking, we can't hear you, so you might have muted yourself on your end as well. Oh, now you're muted again. Can staff please unmute Cal Truman again? All right. Cal Truman, you've been unmuted. But if you're speaking, we cannot hear you. If you've muted yourself on your end, on your computer, or... Did I hear you? Yes.
Is my microphone working?
Yes, it is now. Thank you. Please proceed.
Hello, yes. Am I audible?
Yes. Yes, you are.
Hello?
You can't hear me now. Okay.
Now I can. Okay, great. We've got it. I'm so sorry.
Please proceed.
Great. Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Cal Truman, so C-A-L-T-R-U-M-A-N-N. I am the Careers and Education Coordinator for New Yorkers for Clean Power, which is a statewide campaign to rapidly transition New York to an equitable clean energy economy. As an organization, New Yorkers for Clean Power broadly supports the criteria as identified. We encourage this working group and the DEC to accept ground-truthing comments on an ongoing basis, both to allow for more input than you may be able to receive during this limited period and because many areas are continuing to experience changing demographics. We also urge the DEC to overlay the map with a roadmap so that people can readily identify the boundaries of the disadvantaged communities that you have outlined, because right now it is not at all clear in the current map, which makes ground-truthing challenging. These changes will hopefully make commenting and reinforcing or challenging the identified communities more accessible to folks who aren't necessarily part of the environmental community. On a personal level, as someone who grew up in rural areas and still lives in a rural area, I appreciate the attention that went into identifying overburdened rural communities, which can be more complex than urban, but also want to recognize that in the Hudson Valley in particular, many of these historically lower-income rural communities are, as I said, experiencing demographic shifts, specifically gentrification, as people bought houses during the pandemic. So continuing to update the demographics that you're using will be necessary to make sure that the communities that you're targeting are indeed those most in need of aid. And I believe that is my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bobby Bitker. And I didn't see Bobby Bitker logged in via the Internet. If you've called by phone, please press *3 on your phone, and we will unmute your line. All right. I'm going to move on to our next registered speaker. It's Yasmin Naja. And I didn't see Yasmin Naja logged in, so if you've called, please press *3 on your phone, and we will unmute you. All right. Moving on, then, our next registered speaker is Rachel Carpitella. And if Rachel Carpitella has joined us by phone, please press *3, and we will unmute your line. Our next registered speaker then is Taylor Jaffe. And I believe I saw Taylor's name, so please unmute Taylor's line.
Hello?
Yes.
Great.
Please proceed.
Perfect. Thank you so much, and thank you for hosting this hearing. Very glad to be here with you all today. My name's Taylor Jaffe. I am calling in from Livingston Manor, New York, in the Catskill region, where I work for Catskill Mountain Keeper, a local nonprofit dedicated to protecting the region and its resources and communities. These comments are not particularly on behalf of Catskill Mountain Keeper, but a lot of that work has informed my comments towards these disadvantaged community criteria. First off, broadly, I'm glad that we're doing this, and I'm very much in support of defining the disadvantaged communities and these criteria. One large issue that I do think we can capture moving forward is creating more potential for some kind of buffer zone or other analysis that really can capture those hazards that are in between census tracts. So that way, the census tract... So that way, we can capture more exposure between the census tracts. Another comment that I have is that while all of the indicators look great, there is a problem with data quality in rural areas. And of course, these areas are... They're seeing less... They're less identified as DACS. So one comment that I have is that there could be greater resources going towards creating better data, especially around PM 2.5, since EJ Screen and other... Sorry. Other places that we get this data don't fully capture that in rural communities, including Solvang County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kenneth Bresner. I can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. I'm a former DEC employee. I had 32 years in the solid waste program in New York City. And I think this program is, as much as it's a proper goal, is going down the mandate road. They don't understand the unintended consequences. The specific case was the Waste Connections 50th Street. They wanted to change their CND tonnage to... Precipitable tonnage to CND. The commissioner directed the staff to deny it for just that change, just because of climate change. And I think that is not in line with the department's mission. My father worked for the department before it became DEC. He was with the Health Department. He became over in DEC. And we had conversations at the kitchen table. The mission of the department is the balance of environmental versus public need. And having it as a mandate is not in line with the mission of the department that it was originally set up for and how the agency is being implemented. And what I'm recommending here is two-fold. One, that the direction of this policy and the subsequent divisional policy should never be mandate. They should just be a criteria that should be reviewed. There is no criteria in the policy of how to do the analysis. And number two is they need to have much more ground-truthing of the unintended consequences if it does become a mandate. For example, if you start reducing or preventing the solid waste capacity, you will have a shortage, and that shortage will cause a public health emergency. So my underlying comment is this should never be a mandate. It should just be like the current environmental justice policy of additional items that should be under review. Thank you very much for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy McGraw. I don't know if I saw Nancy McGraw listed. So Nancy McGraw, if you've joined us by telephone, please press *3, and we will unmute your line. Okay. I do not see a raised hand. Our next registered speaker is Lauren Broise. And I see there's a Lauren with a hand-raised staff. So if you'll unmute that line, we'll see if that is the registered speaker.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. Hi, everyone. I'm Lauren Broise, and I am representing Sustainable Westchester today. We are a nonprofit organization based in Westchester County, representing our municipal members. And we are calling in to express that we understand equity is the foundation for sustainability. We want to thank the Climate Justice Working Group for the extensive analysis that went into creating the disadvantaged communities criteria, the DEC and NYSERDA for providing this virtual platform to bring forth the voices of our communities. And the comment that we have today is in relation to the working group voting to include households reporting at the state median income into the criteria. We recommend instead assessing residents based on the 60% area median income to best identify and serve financially distressed households. In Westchester County and the Hudson Valley, the cost of living is much higher than the rest of New York State, and we'd like to see this reflected in the scoping documents. So this is also similar. NYSERDA has their Empower Program and their Assisted Home Performance Program. One is at 60% AMI. The other is at 80% AMI. We would say to take a look at the model that NYSERDA has used for the Assisted Home Performance and Empower Program. So just to summarize, we strongly encourage the Climate Justice Working Group to reconsider the eligibility thresholds for those living outside of disadvantaged community boundaries to be based off of the area median income. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Abigail Welch. And I did see Abigail up top, so your line's been unmuted. It appears that Abigail's line was unmuted, then muted again. And now I see that we have two lines unmuted, staff. We have... Thank you. Abigail, if you're speaking, we can't hear you. So you may have muted yourself on your end with your microphone or your computer, or however you're connected. We still can't hear you. So let's call another speaker, and we'll come back to Abigail Welch to see if we can... And it looks like she may have logged out by the looks of it. Okay. So our next registered speaker is Kate Murray. I did not see Kate Murray's name appear on the people that have logged in. So Kate Murray, if you've called in, please press *3 on your telephone to raise your hand. All right. I do not see any raised hands. Our next registered speaker is Tanya Dwyer. And we do have Tanya up here, so we'll get you unmuted.
I did unmute Tanya.
I can hear you now.
This is Tanya Dwyer. I am speaking as a resident of Peak Skill. After speaking with my fellow residents, who could not be here because they had to work during this time of the day, we had a few concerns. Peak Skill is home to not only the nuclear plant, a gas pipeline under the nuclear plants, and the waste incinerator that is owned by Westchester County to burn all of Westchester's ash, in addition to some from Connecticut. We have thought a very high percentage, especially right next to the incinerator, of air pollution and illness. Around 90% of the people that live by the incinerator don't have internet access. We have a lot of poverty in Peak Skill. We are a great community. We're trying our best, but we carry the environmental burden for the county and the region. So our question is, if there's going to be a set aside, a 40% set aside for burdened communities, will that money come to us separate from the communal burdens of the region? Because we see the incinerator as a communal burden for the entire region and don't think that we should bear the cost of remediation for that with our 40%. That should be a county-wide or region-wide spend instead of the 40% that is much needed to address all the historic burdens and the costs of that burden that we're enduring. So if you could address that and consider it in terms of justness for us, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Randolph Harner. And I do believe I saw Randolph Harner logged in, so please unmute... We have you logged in here twice, so staff's going to try to unmute one of your lines. Hopefully, it's the right one.
Your Honor, there was just an interruption. It said this meeting is being recorded. Judge Caruso, can you hear me for the sake of the hearing?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Thank you very much. First of all, your honor, I want to praise and recognize the Department of Environmental Conservation, Commissioner Segos, for the vital, the indispensable role that by statute and by good intention, the DEC is following on as one of the pillars of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. What I want to say in this hearing is my heart is with the disadvantaged communities. I have a long experience working on clean energy at the municipal and the regional scale. I have a long experience working on clean energy at the municipal and the regional scale. And I speak from some experience, including having served as a party to a number of proceedings under the seminal fourteen dash oh oh one, whatever it is, the beginning of REV, the Reforming the Energy Vision proceeding. So in my mere two minutes, I'd like to state the resources that we've looked to historically in the programs of the Energy Authority of NYSERDA are derived principally from a value-added tax on electricity purchases, along with some regi funds and others potential revenue streams. At most, they amount to nine hundred million to a million, to a billion dollars a year. Most expert parties in my field, which is large-scale clean energy, finance and implementation, believe that to decarbonize New York across sectors, including building space conditioning, transportation, industry, commercial, not just electricity generation, we're going to need to invest private and institutional capital in the amount of perhaps fifty billion, that's with a B, billion, a year for ten years to accomplish the climate goals to which we're committed. So the scale of investment that needs to be made is perhaps fifty times the throughput of our current funding scheme. And there have been no funding schemes announced in the deliberations of the Climate Council, which can actually be effectuated. The main thing to be concerned about for economically disadvantaged communities is that it is misspent money which can never do, have anything but a trivial impact for the community's well-being or for ameliorating the climate crisis. If we think that what we've got to do is to finance for a low-income or a no-cost installation some solar modules or a battery at individual residences of the disadvantaged communities. We must work at regional, municipal and district scale to drive the institutional long-term investment into creating the clean energy resources that will enable persons of all economic levels, but principally the economically disadvantaged, to get off-of-market power based on fossil fuels, but without the mis, ill, well-intentioned, but ill-conceived approach of, of trying to localize electricity production.
Can you please conclude your comments?
I would look forward to working with Dr. Witt and to any, any and all parties in the environmental justice community to lay out an agenda for making sure that long-term capital investment guided by wise state policies sees to the needs of these families and these communities without going in a direction which is doomed from the beginning in terms of meeting our very large climate goals. Thank you for the opportunity to participate.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth O'Rafferty. I don't know if I saw Elizabeth O'Rafferty logged in. If you've called by telephone, please press star three on your phone and we'll, we will unmute your line. And I do see, staff, I do see Anne Finneran is now with us. She raised her hand, so let's go, we'll circle back and we'll call Anne Finneran.
Seeing me. My specific concerns have to do with the disadvantaged, disadvantaged environmental justice communities near the Competitive Power Ventures Fracked Gas Power Plant in Wayway Yanda. I have called the D E C's attention to this before. When CPV did their application, their original application, and currently they have no application and no air permit, and they are operating for whatever their capacity is, which really needs to be addressed. But as far as the E J communities, I called your attention a number of years ago, I think twenty eighteen, to the fact that the, the E J map, the D E C E J map needs to be updated to show the proximity of CPV. There's a, if you look at the map for the town of Wayway Yanda and you look at how close the bottom border of that map is to CPV, you will recognize that the E J community in Wayway Yanda is not only close to, within two miles of the plant, but it is downwind from the plant. So you really need to take a look at that and adjust their map. But for one thing, they shouldn't be operating anywhere. They do not have an air permit. They do not even have a valid application for an air permit renewal. So you really gotta look at this. It's way past time. And perhaps now that there's a new state senator there, we can get something done about this. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Hank Cohenstein. And I don't see, don't believe I saw Hank Cohenstein logged in. If you've joined us by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. All right, I do not see a raised hand. So I'm gonna move on to the next speaker is Barbara O'Day. And I do have a Barbara with no last name. If that's Barbara O'Day, please raise your hand on, by, by pressing the little hand icon.
Oh, I'll press the icon.
Oh, is this Barbara O'Day?
It is.
Oh, please proceed.
Okay. So, good afternoon. I'm Barbara O'Day and I work as a Clean Energy Associate. And I'm also representing Sustainable Westchester. My comment is as follows. The draft of the D A C criteria refers to minority groups with outdated language, specifically in references to Native American or indigenous populations as Indians and Asian-American Pacific Islanders as just Asians. We believe this language should be changed so the minority groups are both consistently and accurately represented in this criteria. The change would represent New York State's efforts towards accurate ethnic and racial representation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pramila Malik. And I saw Pramila had logged in earlier, so, yep.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please proceed.
Hi. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is Pramila Malik. I'm the Chair of Protect Orange County. The mission of Protect Orange County is to safeguard the environment upon which all sentient beings that call Orange County their home depend upon for health, safety and well-being. I, we are going to be submitting more technical comments and I will try to make this really, really fast to touch on some core points. The speaker before mentioned that the CPV power plant, which is one of the largest sources of pollution in New York State currently, is still operating without a Title V permit, without a completed application. Now, I looked at your disadvantaged communities list and you have about twelve listed around the CPV power plant. We have identified as of twenty eighteen tracks twenty-seven environmental justice communities within five miles of the power plant. Seems like you use one mile as a criteria for power generation sources. That's wholly inadequate. We've documented emissions as far as eight miles away. Our scientists say that fifteen miles, within fifteen miles of a large pollution source, people are greatly adversely impacted. Your data sources are unclear to a layperson and how you process that data is really unclear. And although you list the criteria, it's unclear how you weight the various criteria that you use to identify D A Cs. Certainly from a climate and pollution perspective, greenhouse gas emissions and particulate matter emissions are a much greater factor than housing vacancy rates. So we also think a separate analysis should be done in areas around very large pollution sources like CPV. And you need to conduct an independent health impact analysis to determine who really is being mostly impacted. In order to do that, you would also have to do a Gaussian air modeling analysis because emissions are dependent upon wind currents and topography. And so I don't think you can determine who is greatly, most greatly impacted without doing both an H I A and a Gaussian air modeling analysis. We also think you should reorganize the D A C list, not in order of city or county or location, but in order of most impacted. So for example, the CPV power plant operated four point three terawatt hours in twenty twenty-one. It was the second largest pollution source, power generation pollution source in New York State, second only to Cricket Valley. Now, I don't know the E J communities around Cricket Valley, but I certainly know the E J communities around the CPV power plant and they are greatly being adversely impacted. We have asthma rates, C O P D rates, pulmonary illnesses, heart disease illnesses going through the roof. That's been noted by local pulmonologists. And finally, I think I just want to say that the funds should not be used to greenwash major sources of emissions. So for example, although we have a significant number of E J communities around this major pollution source, we are also surrounded by solar farms. And those solar farms do absolutely nothing to mitigate the emissions that people are suffering from. So the first and foremost use of any fund should be to halt the harm, to limit the pollution and to protect these communities. That is real justice. That is real equity. Anything else is just greenwashing. We'll submit more technical comments, but thank you again for the opportunity. A reminder to all the D E C staff, we need a, a public hearing process on the D E C non-existent application and operations without a permit. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was the last of our registered speakers. So what I'm gonna do right now is I'm gonna open the floor for anybody else that wants to speak. And if, so if you want to, if you wanted to speak, even though you haven't registered to speak, all you need to do is hit the little hand icon in the bottom right of your screen so that we can see your raised hand or you press star three if you've called in. And we will give you the opportunity to put a comment on the record. Okay, I see we have one raised hand from Liz. So Liz, when we unmute your line, please state your full name for our court reporter and spell your last name too, please.
Ms. Liz O'Rafferty. I am a Poughkeepsie resident. My biggest concern about disadvantaged communities is that the funds are, are used appropriately. For example, in just transitions, that the funds do go to minorities and help develop jobs. And my other concern is within certain blocks, there are different vulnerability rates. And that in, in certain areas are aligned to economics as well and race, to tell you the truth. So my concern is that the funds go to the actual areas that need it and folks that need it. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and Liz, that, you were previously registered as Elizabeth O'Rafferty, correct? Oh, we've already muted her. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. So the next person with a raised hand is Liddell Detremont.
Hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you very much. It's, it's pronounced Detremont, but no, no, no matter. I'm a nurse and I live in Glens Falls. And although I'm not currently working with any advocacy groups, I've done some advocacy work for Clean Air Action Network in the past. And one of our concerns was the, the incinerator in Hudson Falls, which falls into one of the communities identified. And the Action Network has also been concerned about the pollution in the Glens Falls area. I am a resident of Glens Falls and a nurse at Glens Falls Hospital, a bedside nurse. And I just want to say that based on the environmental justice issues in this region, I'm very pleased to see that Glens Falls adjacent to the paper mill and the cement plant where they've been burning, they were approved a few years back to burn ragged tail at the cement plant. And it's one of the only cement plants in the state, has been included. I'm very pleased to see that because we are concerned about air quality and we don't feel that we have adequate local air monitoring in this area. And we're also concerned about the impact of the incinerator in Hudson Falls. I just want to emphasize that both of these, all of these plants are, are right in the midst of residential neighborhoods and it, and I, my personal feeling as a nurse is that this is definitely impacting the health of our residents. And then Fort Edward, of course, has historically been very impacted by a lot of toxic waste sites in Glens Falls and South Glens Falls as well. So I feel like I'm very pleased to see that we are included on this list and I hope we remain on this list. And I just want to bring attention to the fact that these polluting industries, I hope that they will be seen and reconsidered, especially because of the age of the incinerator, that they really don't belong in our community and they are impactful on the health of local residents. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nalita Lebait. You've been unmuted.
No, I'll try again. This is.
I can, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So yes, Nalita Lebait, last name L as in Larry, A as in apple, B as in boy, A as in apple, T as in Tom, E. I'm a concerned citizen, mom of five children and caretaker to my elderly mom. I live in the town of Putten Valley, which is in the exurbs of New York City and in the Hudson Valley. I have some comments about the report and how it should be more robust. And some items that were excluded to come up with some of the rates, I believe should be reconsidered to be included. In particular, for the section on vegetation, reforestation and trees, I believe this is an important indicator and should be reconsidered. If not, perhaps there's some other opportunity for a proxy. These are important because of the storm damage and erosion possibility with climate change. Additionally, there's issues on income and education employment. So some of the items that were excluded in the housing vacancy rates were issues and numbers about homelessness. This is an important indicator. There are national indicators, state indicators, city indicators, local indicators. These should be included. These are vulnerable populations and will make the indicators more robust. Additionally, I was pleased to see comments about redlining. I believe it should be more apparent on the map. And other reports, as the reports are finalized, the overlays of all the different reports that were used and data sets to come up with all the indicators and the final report. Additionally, I want to say that a lot of people with paycheck to paycheck and affordability is very important to my family and my community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Constance Dehamel.
Thank you for opening the forum to people who didn't sign up. I will be submitting written comments, but a couple of comments here struck me. We're in similar positions. I come from the town of Dover, Hamlet of Wingdale, and we are. I come from the town of Dover, Hamlet of Wingdale, and we are overburdened with an 1,100 megawatt power plant, the Cricket Valley Energy Power Plant that somebody mentioned here. We, DEC was the lead agency on that. They said there were no PJs in the town at that time. They agreed with the applicant. We have a school, middle and high school within half a mile of this plant. We did not have an independent expert who could have gone up against Cricket Valley Energy, and may I add DEC, to challenge their air quality reports. The air tests were taken at locations that did not reflect the specific topography. We have inversions, air tests were taken at flat areas. We, the whole town, like somebody else was talking about, regional, should be designated as a disadvantaged community. Every one of our students that go to public school come from the entire town and they are within half a mile of this plant. In addition, I would recommend that you take into account the free and reduced lunch program as a criteria. We are second only to Poughkeepsie. We're in the Harlem Valley. We are left out of a lot of resources and mostly ignored. We're in a different watershed than the Hudson River Valley watershed and that, and we have no town center, no town newspaper. We have, our residents are told to go look at Facebook or the town website or YouTube for information. We have a lot of people who are in lower socioeconomic conditions who can't, who don't have, there's so many barriers to access, I can't begin, but I will list them in my public comment.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Sonya Stark.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please proceed.
Okay. Thank you for the DC's role in providing this forum today. My name is Sonya Stark. I'm a volunteer member and filmmaker for the Clean Air Coalition of Albany County. Again, my name is Sonya, S-O-N-J-A, Stark, S-T-A-R-K. And I'm speaking as a resident of Selker, Queamons and Ravina, just south of Albany on the Hudson River. This area is home to the cement plant Lafarge Wholesome, and it sits adjacent to a high school with nearly 2,000 students, as well as the ever-expanding Port of Queamons that sits on a vulnerable habitat zone for sturgeon and balt eagles on the Hudson River at Tuas in Town. The Clean Air Coalition believes wholeheartedly that we are sitting in a disadvantaged community because our area is without a doubt negatively impacted by the emissions of both industries and each that rely on each other for transportation and economic growth. You've always been concerned about the tire burning and the waste incineration possibility at Lafarge. And given that the maps that you provided on your designated draft DAC track list this area as being 94% higher than what is, than areas tracked statewide, we are anticipating risks and burdens that will include higher incidences of asthma, COPD, heart attacks, premature deaths, lower birth weights and disabilities. And some of the reasons why would probably be because of all the diesel trucks in this village. They too pose an 85% higher risk to our health. The active landfills in this village pose at least are almost a 50% higher risk. And of course, we have mining and limestone mining activities and manufacturing, industrial manufacturing, that also pose a whopping 96% higher risk. So given with all these stark warnings on our horizon, we really implore the DEC to not greenlight any projects that would expand the Port of Queamons, that would inevitably alter the area and allow the continuing backslide into an, into the possibility of burning garbage and sand and waste at Lafarge. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have any more raised hands right now, but what I'm going to do is, oh, there's a new one, I think. Sandra Kissam. Please proceed. I can hear you.
Thank you. My comments are relevant to the city of Newburgh and the associated town of Newburgh. There are numerous sources of pollution within the city and within the town. One of the most significant is a, is a batch plant, an asphalt batch plant, which is actually located on Stewart Airport. Stewart Airport, I should remind you, is serving as both a military and a commercial airport. And naturally, flights that are mostly at this point conducted by the military are affecting air quality in the Newburgh area. But this batch plant unfortunately never was subjected or submitted for an environmental impact statement. It was unfortunately pushed through and, and operational without any analysis of the, of the air, air pollution that it was generating. I would like to encourage the DEC to look at this plant. Again, it is located on Stewart Airport, adjacent to the, adjacent to the landing areas, and it is a serious polluter. And we are unable to quantify the level of pollution because again, it has never had an environmental study done. And I want to thank you for, for your hearing today. There are other problems with the city of Newburgh. It is undoubtedly reeling from the fact that along the waterfront of the Hudson River, there are numerous oil storage facilities and trucks continually operate through the city between the oil storage facilities and other locations. And this is another source of significant pollution. Thank you so much for hearing my comments and I do appreciate your efforts to do some work in this area.
Thank you. So that was our, hold on, maybe I got another raised, I got more raised hands. Very good. So our next speaker is Vic Putnam, Putman, I'm sorry. You're all set. Is this Vic Putman?
This is Vic Putman.
Yes, please proceed.
Otherwise known as Victor Putman, P-U-T-M-A-N. I'm the retired Essex County Planning Director, calling from Willsboro, New York. Essex County is the second largest county by area in New York State and is entirely within the Adirondack Park. And reviewing the criteria for disadvantaged communities, I'd like to request consideration of including the entire Adirondack Park as a marginalized community with serious disadvantages relating to climate change. Specifically, communities within the park are subject to pollutants that are not locally generated. They're mostly generated out of state and happen to fall on our region. We have serious fish eating advisories. We also have the coldest climate in the entire state, which requires additional energy resources. Our communities are very far apart, requiring more transportation expenditures. Your reliance on the median household income data set for determining socio-economic disadvantaged community status is less than accurate and seriously flawed. As the American Community Survey, which prepares that data set, relies on algorithms that do not represent communities, especially very rural communities such as located in the Adirondack Park. I will be submitting written comments and just wanted to get those points out. Thank you very much for your time and I look forward to responding and writing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marlene Donnelly.
Hello.
Please proceed. Yep, I can hear you.
I'm Marlene Donnelly. I'm with, living in Guanis, Brooklyn, New York, the Superfund site, Guanis Canal, and the state brownfield program doing cleanups of three MTP sites. We also have a power plant down the way. We also have a big BQE highway that jumps over the canal and disperses exhaust dust on our community constantly. We have air quality problems. We have polluted land and we also have polluted water. We have a canal that the state DEC qualifies as only Class SD, which means they can dump unlimited levels of pathogens into it. It is polluted with poop and we only have to have dissolved oxygen level of a certain 3.0 per liter in our canal. And that's delivered to our canal by way of a huge carbon footprint sucking it in from the East River. This is, my concern here is we have very much, the environmental problems on air, land and water that are yet to be addressed as the city of New York, with the help of this DEC and this state, are planning to increase the environmental justice community with huge high rises along this canal. Without these issues yet to be addressed, that, that this program going forward seems disingenuous when we're adding to the problem rather than solving the problem. And we would like the state to step in without, not continuing to fund building new environmental justice problems until the environmental conditions that are not yet addressed are properly addressed. Air quality, water and land are still going unaddressed within our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was the last speaker with a raised hand. So what I'm going to do, and we've been doing in all these matters to date, is we're going to take a five-minute recess and then we'll come back on the record. And if anybody else wanted to put a comment on the record at that time, they may. If not, we will adjourn at that point. Okay? So we are off the record. Okay, we're off the record. Back on the record. Okay, one moment. Okay, we are back on the record. Thank you. All right, everybody. So I'll put the call out here again. Anybody wants to, that hasn't already, if they want to put a comment on the record, please raise your hand and we will unmute your line. So we have, I think it's Barb Hurdle. You had it, you had your hand raised for a second, but... So anybody that wants, wants to speak that hasn't already spoken, please just raise your hand and we will unmute your line. All right, so our next speaker, Miss Hurdle, you did it again. It looked like you raised your hand. I see several people raising their hands and then dropping them immediately. So right now I have, I see no raised hands. All right, let's unmute Barb Hurdle and we'll, we'll get her comments.
Hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Great, great, great. Thank you. Okay, so my name is Barbara Hertal. I have a place in Brooklyn, New York, and also in Wausau, New York, in the Lower Hudson Valley. I want to thank you for holding this hearing. I mean, it's time for the state to stop and letting polluters place or replace their polluting projects in these communities. Adirondacks Park and other waterways need to be looked at, to be added to the data sheet. In identifying the areas, we need to look at areas beyond what the data shows. Food stamp programs, school lunch programs and water, air and water alerts, this is what should inform the data for environmental and disadvantaged communities. So please add that criteria to when you identify the environmentally, the environmentally damaged, disadvantaged communities. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see any other raised hands. So what I'm going to ask staff to do, can you put up the slide with the, with the addresses for the written comments? I just want to repeat that information for everybody that's, that's still with us. So written comments are due by July 7th. And if they're posted, they either need to be postmarked that day or emailed by five o'clock in the evening on July 7th. The email address is daccomments@dec.ny.gov. And written comments by mail can be sent to NYSDECdraftDACcomments, Attention, Office of Environmental Justice, 625 Broadway, 14th Floor, Albany, New York, 12233. And just as a reminder, the, the last hearing is tomorrow. It's a virtual hearing. It's covering Western New York and that's tomorrow at 12:00 PM. And if you needed more information on that, you could go to the climate.ny.gov website. So I thank everybody to, we haven't raised hands, so let's get that before I close this out. So... You've been unmuted. I see A. Wilson Energy.
Yes, hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak up a little bit at the end of your session now. Yes, I'm Annie Wilson. And, and in briefly looking at the various issues and, and certainly the consideration for no developments into existing disadvantaged communities as identified and elsewhere, and all of the other non-compliance issues in New York and the air quality and every other environmental aspect, I wanted to ask or add, what would be the concern for impacts by government decisions onto disadvantaged communities outside of New York, whether it be incineration in Pennsylvania, importing hydropower from mega dams built on indigenous lands in Canada? And that there could and should be, I believe, even though I understand that this policy is for New York only, that there be consideration or at least a, a recognition of these impacts elsewhere as part of the state strategy. That's my comment for now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll give it one last call since someone keeps seeming to raise their hand when I'm about ready to adjourn, but I'll give everybody a minute here to, if anybody else wants to put a comment on the record, I'll keep the record open for another minute. Okay? And just, just a reminder about tomorrow's WebEx virtual hearing, just like today. I mean, we, I mean, today's hearing was supposed to be for basically the mid Hudson communities. And of course, we've had calls from Essex County, Warren County, Guanis, et cetera. So you know, you know, you're not locked, you don't necessarily have to be living in Western New York to call into tomorrow's hearing. So just wanted to chime in there. All right, so I don't see any more raised hands. So with that, we are adjourned and thank, I thank everybody for their, for their participation today. I know the comments will go a long way to help the department, you know, consider the definition for the disadvantaged community. So I appreciate that and I know they do as well. And with that, we're off the record. Okay, we are off the record. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. You're welcome. Everybody have a good day. You too.